Good afternoon. I want to welcome everybody to this August meeting of your Virginia State Board of Elections. Just for clarification, we are going to have a brief public hearing on an item that we took action on previously but requires an APA compliant public hearing. Then we will adjourn from that and go into our regular August agenda, which has already been posted. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order and ask Mr. Kowski to come up and present information on the disclosure statement requirements for print media advertising. This is a direct result of a bill last session. Is that correct? Thank you.
His chair, members of the board. Just to give you some quick background on this, I know this has come up a couple of times already, but as the chair said, there's previous legislation that changed the code related to print media disclosure statements. So previously it had to be seven-point font, and the legislation changed it to a font that is proportionate to the rest of the advertisement and then left it to all of you to determine what actually is proportionate. So that's the basis of this regulation here that you've seen. As you'll recall, a temporary version of this was approved at the May meeting in order to comply with the statutory timeline, but that didn't circumvent the current, the ongoing process that was going for the full regulation. So in this standard process, public comment has been ongoing, and that will go through September. And then this public hearing is part of what's required in the APA Administrative Process Act. So once you receive all the public comment and you have the testimony from today as well, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the process before it moves to the final stage to make any changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have before you receive public comment. Thank you.
Secretary Elvis Long to call and roll.
Certainly. Chairman O'Bannon.
Here.
Vice Chair Dance.
Here.
Delegate Merricks.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here remotely.
Okay, and Secretary Elvis Long here.
Thank you for joining us, Matthew. All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The minutes from the July 2nd meeting have been distributed to the board for their review. I'm requesting that if there are no corrections or additions needed, that you would ask for a motion to approve them as presented.
All right. Any questions or motions?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes be approved.
Second. All right, call and roll.
Yes.
Please.
Chairman O'Bannon.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance.
Aye.
Delegate Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Weinstein.
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long, aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to public comment, open public comment on any agenda item or any other item that the public wishes to present. I'm going to take the chairman's prerogative and address one agenda item related to Lynchburg. I'll just make this statement. Following the June primary, elect received reports that concerns were raised regarding the Lynchburg Office of the General Registrar's processes and procedures related to the processing of absentee ballots in their central absentee precinct. After several conversations with elect staff and the commissioner as well as local council, the issues were addressed and areas of improvement were identified. Members of the Lynchburg Electoral Board and Office of the General Registrar are attending today's meeting to provide an update to the public and the state board on the additional training and process improvements that it put into place to ensure compliance with Virginia's code. So I'll now welcome the folks from Lynchburg.
Yes, sir. David Levy here from Chairman of the Lynchburg Electoral Board.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yes, thank you for having me. In response to your letter and in response to the incident and the concerns, and in addition to our report, we will tell you that we are highly vigilant about our Dropbox procedures now, and we have folk need to close them timely on Election Day and incorporate the procedures of custody of the ballots and the drop boxes into our Canvas process leading up to Canvas and Canvas. We are incorporating the Dropbox procedures in our trainings more specifically than it's been, and particularly for our central office staff where the particular problem arose. But we realize that our board is being highly vigilant on that topic. Questions for me?
I apologize. So I want to thank you very much. I want to make sure that all of the members have seen the letter from the Lynchburg Electoral Board dated July 25th, and I'm sure Ms. Tyson will make this a part of the records so that it'll be available to everybody. So thank you very much. On behalf of your State Board of Elections, we thank you for your time and effort to rectify these concerns. As you all know, it is the role of the State Board to supervise and coordinate the work of the county and city electoral boards and of the general registrars to obtain uniformity, legality, and purity in all elections. As issues in the electoral process arise, it is our duty to address them and verify that the proper remedial efforts are put into place by localities to ensure accurate, fair, open, and secure elections in the Commonwealth. So we appreciate your response and your changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any? Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to a general public comment. Anybody in the room?
I have Jerry Cohen.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and other members of the board, as an officer of election in Chesterfield County, I'm here to request clarification of the elected advisory issued on October 24th, 2023, which suggested that officers of election working to process mail-in ballots be denied access to information that they require to perform their statutory duties. The advisory suggested that the registrar's staff would validate the voter's last four of social and year of birth without the need for officer of election verification. Many of Virginia's registrars, including Chesterfield, have acted upon this suggestion and after staff review of the last four of the social and year of birth, have removed the ability of the officer of election to even see the last four of the social and the year of birth, eliminating the availability of the officer of election to verify the accuracy of the work of the registrar's staff. Virginia law authorizes the officers of election to process absentee mail-in ballots rather than the registrar's staff. Officers of election are vetted, trained, and swear an oath to assure the authenticity and accuracy of the processing of the absentee mail-in ballots. To remove the information necessary for the officers of election to perform this critical function is not only imprudent but also unwarranted. The advisory of October 23rd referenced concerns about the officers of election having access to potentially sensitive information such as the last four of the social and the year of birth. To me, it's noteworthy that anyone off the street can take a short online voter registration course and for 10 days access an applicant's full name, date of birth, full social security number, military status, felony conviction, and mental stability status. In fact, as you can see in the handout I provided, the federal rules of civil procedure do not grant privacy protection to the last four of the social security number nor to the year of birth. Everyone makes mistakes. To assume that the registrar's staff will not is not only unwise but risks fraud in Virginia's election process. reinstating the ability of the officers of election in cap to verify the social security number, the last four, and the year of birth after review by the registrar's staff is essential not only to compliance with the law of Virginia but also to the integrity of the processing of the mail-in ballots in Virginia. Therefore, I urge this body to require that officers of election be given access to the pertinent information which they require to perform their statutory duties as they process mail-in ballots in Virginia, to include the year of birth and the last four of the social. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this very important matter.
Thank you very much. That was perfect at three minutes, but I assure you we will take your comments into consideration. Anybody else in person?
Rock Santa Gray.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
Ms. Gray, we can hear you, but we aren't unable to see you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, can you see me now?
There we go. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. For the last year, I have been asking elect to clean up the registered voter list. Very little has been done. Elect claims it did a comprehensive audit which resulted in removing almost 80,000 deceased voters in 2023. Since then, we have identified hundreds of deceased voters that died years ago and are still registered to vote. The voter list is supposed to be compared to the Social Security Administration records once a year. Why hasn't a complete review of the voter list been done with the Social Security Administration so all deceased voters are canceled? Elect indicates that it established a comprehensive data sharing agreement with seven states and is receiving additional data from 42 states. The surrender of license process from the 42 states shows that all the needed information to cancel voters have moved out of states is only received 6% of the time. Why isn't the new address being received to properly cancel voters? The surrender of license data has been in the Code of Virginia but elect did not start utilizing it until October 2023. Why hasn't a complete review of the DMV surrender of license data been done with the registered voter list? Virginia is in violation of Code 24.2404.4. Elect does not have the data sharing agreements with two bordering states, Maryland and North Carolina, or states where Virginia typically move, Florida, Texas, to identify people who are no longer entitled to register to maintain an accurate voter list. The last state elect compared voter data was June of 2024. This comparison was with the state of Georgia. When is the comparison going to be done with the other states? Elect is not properly canceling duplicate registration as required in 24.2427B. 427B and promptly canceling voters who are registered in another state. Elect places these voters in the National Change of Address Confirmation System. The National Change of Address Process in 52 USC 20507 for change to voters who has a challenge of address based on information received from the U.S. Postal Service. The NCOA process does not apply to voters who are officially identified as having registered in another state subsequent to the day they registered in Virginia. Elect does not utilize important information provided in a status sharing agreement such as registration dates in other states to cancel voters. When voters register outside of the DMV, there is no proof of identity with the Social Security Administration and legal presence. This means that approximately 600,000-plus registered voters had no verification done. What has elect done to advocate for the extreme important control? Elect's disregard for internal controls and processes is very disturbing. Please take immediate action to clean up the registered voter list before the November election. Deceased and registered voters who moved and registered in another state can still be canceled since they are not systematic changes and are not restricted to 90-day transactions before a federal election. The Code of Virginia 24.2427 also states that these transactions may be canceled at any time during the year in which the general registrar discovers that the voter is no longer entitled to be registered.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Based on review. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Joanne Chase.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioner, and other members of the board, as well as everyone in this meeting today. Thank you so much for the great work that you're doing for the Commonwealth of Virginia and your great efforts. I am originally from San Juan, Puerto Rico, United States citizen, lived in Loudoun County for the past 20 years, collectively for about 30 years in Virginia. And I have a concern to bring to your attention respectfully. I noticed that in the manuals from Prince William County Election Officers 2023-2024, in page 79, there's a special ID situation specifically addressing the driver's license privilege cards. It's a little bit contradictory, the information in there, because it states that these driver's licenses are not acceptable because they're only given to non-U.S. citizens. Then it goes on, on that page 79, and you don't have it in front of you, I'm just quickly going to go over it because there's not that much time. It identifies the different identifiers so that the election officers can know that these are not regular citizens' licenses, but these special licenses, privileged licenses, are only for non-U.S. citizens. The last paragraph before you look at the actual privilege license indicates that this individual may vote a regular ballot if they sign an ID confirmation statement, number one, or must vote a provisional ballot if they not signed this statement. I'm a little bit confused with that because it's kind of contradictory. On the top, it says that this type of identification license is only for non-U.S. citizens and cannot be used to vote. And then on the bottom, it gives that individual the opportunity to sign the ID confirmation statement and receive a ballot right off the bat. Or the person decides not to sign it than to get a provisional ballot. I just want to ensure that only U.S. citizens in the Commonwealth of Virginia get the ability to vote and that the instructions given in these manuals are complementary to federal and state law. Thank you very much. Anything you guys can do would be greatly appreciated. God bless you.
Ms. Chase, thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next, I have Jim Bullock.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jim Bonalp. Chairman, Commissioner, other members of the board and staff, I want to thank you for your time and your efforts. You've got a difficult job. I'd like to reinforce, first of all, some of the feedback you've been hearing from around the state last month, and I was there as well with regard to support for the idea of doing the batch comparison method for your risk-limiting audit. I'd like to just reinforce that. I won't belabor that now. We already been through that, heard a lot of that. I think that'd be the least you could do, actually. You could also consider a statewide audit. I understand that's not any longer required by law, at least that's the interpretation, but that would perhaps be even better. But the main reason I want to spend my time here today is to focus on something else that's gotten a lot of attention lately. It's the governor has been recognizing there might be some areas of clarification needed regarding responsibilities for cleaning up our voter lists. You've been hearing a lot about it. His latest attempt, of course, is in this vein, was Executive Order Number 35. Now, I'm sure you're very familiar with this order. You're busy with the details, how you're going to comply with it. It's not perfect, perhaps, but it does give you clarifying direction to act. First, I'd like to draw your attention to a couple paragraphs where the governor outlines what he seems to assume is already happening. In paragraph six and seven, he says, and I quote, "When issuing a credential, DMV verifies applicant's legal status with the SAVE database and the Social Security Administration database," and then goes on to say, "All data collected by DMV that identifies non-citizens is shared with elect, which uses it to scrub," and I'll emphasize that word, "scrub," existing voter rolls and remove non-citizens. And then in the directive section, it clarifies that the governor states that the Commissioner of Department of Elections shall certify in writing that there will be a procedure in place for the daily updates of voter lists to remove individuals who are unable to verify that they are citizens of Department of Labor vehicles from a statewide voter registration list. And when the governor says unable to verify one's citizenship, he clearly is under the impression that someone in the executive branch tried to verify it, but whether that is you or DMV, it is certainly you that he is directing to certify that it's been done. He implies, he implies that perhaps it's already a process in place. He suggests SAVE is one piece of data you can use, SSA having data as well. Doesn't suggest those are maybe determinative, but they are tools you can use to do your job. The governor leaves the analysis part up to elect. Which brings me to my final point. Earlier this year, I saw a copy of Commissioner Beale's response to a concern raised by Delegate Eric Zier back in March, having to do with suggestions on how to audit the voter list for illegal voters. And in the response, there was a quote. She indicates, "It appears you asked elect to transfer the entire voter list to DMV in order to DMV to perform analysis against its own data." Well, when I read that, I thought, hmm, looks to me like Delegate Zier was merely suggesting that you use all the tools at your disposal to do your job, with all due respect. And it appears the governor's Executive Order 35 reinforces, at the very least, who he expects to certify that it's been done. So why leave that? Difficult job with you. It's in your lap. God bless you, and I know you do a hard job, difficult job, and I wish y'all the best luck in the world. Do a fine job as far as I can tell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. All right, next?
Next, we have Kenneth Van Verde.
Mr. Van Verde, you're welcome.
Yes, are we good to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wish to make several comments regarding EO 35, which I believe makes dangerous and misleading statements about election systems and infrastructure. First, EO 35 states that election management systems and tabulators are only counting machines, that they are not connected to the Internet. This statement is pure sophistry. All tabulators, including those used by ESNS and Dominion in Virginia, are fundamentally computers whose components are manufactured and assembled in China and Taiwan. There is absolutely no way of knowing their connectivity capabilities. With today's technology, modems are easily disguised as other components that cannot be identified by visual inspection or even Wi-Fi sniffers. Second, certification of election management systems is done by two companies who have serious conflicts of interests because of their close ties to ESNS and Dominion. Certification standards have not been updated since 2005, and they are dangerously outdated, and no one knows for sure what software is running on any given machine. Findings in Mesa County, Colorado, Antrim County, Michigan, Otero County, New Mexico, Coffee County, Georgia, Maricopa County, Arizona, and Williamson County, Tennessee, for example, all demonstrated the existence of corrupt election manipulating software operating on their machines. Third, as for security over ballot drop boxes, the documentary 2000 Mules demonstrated resoundingly that surveillance provides no deterrence whatsoever as criminals were shown to be wearing masks and gloves to hide their identities while stuffing drop boxes at scale. There is no compelling need for drop boxes. Logic and accuracy tests provide no assurances that tabulators are properly working. They are easily subverted. Just think of the Volkswagen scandal when their cars were shown to be programmed to misreport emissions rates when they were tested. So when you think of LNA, think of Volkswagen. Fifth, elect Braggs have removed 85,000 ineligible records from the voter registration lists, but it's been clearly demonstrated that there are likely still a million ineligible registrations remaining on the list as indicated by Holtzman Vogel, the EAC, and the U.S. Census Bureau data. Citizens have been engaged in finding and challenging likely ineligible registrations on Virginia's rolls, primarily for voters moving out of their jurisdictions. The buy-in of challenges has been an embarrassment to elect, given their poor list maintenance history. What did elect do? They recently issued an advisory that these challenges to registrations will require a hearing before they can be removed, and that is appropriate, but this hearing will not be scheduled until after November. What are they hiding? Recently, our data team brought copies of Virginia's very expensive voter rolls as part of a citizens' initiative to identify ineligible voter registrations. We also obtained a software license to perform NCOA reviews as well as other data analytics tools. While our work is ongoing, our analysis to this point has tentatively identified over 400,000 registrations on Virginia's voter rolls, which appear to not meet NVRA or HAVA criteria for inclusion, which require immediate attention. An increasing number of us no longer trust our elections. Self-serving and gaslighting, pre- eating EO 35 only makes us distrust the system more. Yes, for 20 seconds. We will not tolerate a corrupt system that counts our votes in secret. As an example, last week, the Hanover County Republican Committee, membership joined by four other major counties, approved a resolution to move to hand-count ballots. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Next.
Next, we have Claire Bell Wheeler.
Mr. Casperick.
Yes, Chairman O'Bannon, thank you very much for having me. Everyone can hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Thomas Casperick. I'm a voter in Loudoun County, and I'm representing myself as a citizen. I am, Dr. O'Bannon, I'm requesting that I receive written response to my following comments from elect as well as the Executive Secretary Lynn McDermott acknowledging these comments, but also with a response to the following. And I do echo the comments of some of the people here who've had, who have high regard for our electoral process. It is a lot of work and it takes a lot of expertise and time to accomplish them, and I know that from being involved in them. At the same time, we have brought serious issues, legal issues, to our electoral board in Loudoun County, to our registrar in Loudoun County. We have other people that we know across the state who are doing the same and are mostly ignored or addressed in a way that's very dismissive. So to that end, we're going to be filing a formal HAVA complaint over some numerous violations, as mentioned by a couple of the people on this call, such as invalid voter registrations, the state's lack of a clear definition of what constitutes a vote, the ability of the electronic voting equipment to allow the voter to verify how their ballot is cast and counted, which means I cannot know for sure, nor will the state tell me how my vote was counted once I put it into the ballot scanner. The other thing is the security and accuracy of the voting equipment to meet the certification standards. I need to know what procedures you've undertaken to secure our election, our electronic voting systems required by HAVA as critical infrastructure for national security. What we found, Dr. O'Bannon, and taken a lot of time to research, thousands and thousands of hours, is that it's woefully inadequate to conduct secure elections by using voting equipment. The only way to secure our elections, sir, is without electronic voting systems being certified, using those votes from the electronic systems to certify vote counts in our elections. So therefore, I will say emphatically that the, under the current regime of voting systems using electronics, that there is no way for a registrar or a state-elect person to know exactly who voted and how, who voted, and how many votes are actually in the system when it's done. There's no way to verify that. If there is, then I would expect that in the response to my comments here by your board and the Executive Secretary. Keep in mind that we will be filing a formal complaint on these items, or will be more detail forthcoming as to which specific HAVA, NIVRA, and FISMA regulations or federal laws that are being violated with the current.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
I have no more public comment.
Hey, Dr. Wheeler, going once, going twice. Nobody else for public comment? All right, I want to thank all those folks that chose to make their public comments today, and that will complete this section of the agenda. Next is Commissioner's Report. Commissioner Beale's.
Chairman O'Bannon, Vice Chair Dance, members of the board. While the rest of the Commonwealth is getting back to school, the Department of Elections and general registrars are getting back to voting again. Today marks one month from the start of early voting on September 20th. The preparations that are ongoing include programming and testing equipment, proofing and printing of ballots, training officers of election, and ensuring accessibility of polling places. At the department, we are ensuring that all of our guidance documents, such as the GREB Handbook, have been updated and have held several trainings throughout the summer for election officials. for election officials, both in person and online. Topics have included legislative changes, logic and accuracy testing, campaign finance records management, write-in certifications for the presidential election, election night reporting of results, and preparations for conducting risk-limiting audits. This will be the third statewide election in Virginia this year, following the March presidential primary and the June congressional primary elections. Local elections offices are actively recruiting officers of election for the presidential election. We highly encourage you to consider serving your fellow Virginians in this way. Thank you.
All right. Next item, party abbreviations.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Dance, and members of the board. My name is John Cronin, ERS Supervisor for the Department of Elections. I have one item for you today on the political party abbreviations for general and special election ballots. You'll see in the materials the attachments of the current ballot standards, as well as a table of the abbreviations. So elect staff recommends the board vote to use the current recommended abbreviations presented for general and special elections being held through July 31, 2025. Have to answer any questions.
All right, any members have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the board approve the party abbreviations as presented by staff for general and special elections being held through July 31, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Chairman O'Bannon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance?
Aye.
Delegate Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Weinstein?
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long?
Aye.
Quick question, is this before us because we need to do it annually, or was it a result of legislation?
Believe it's annually.
So it's something that we have not delegated to anybody?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Next item. Ms. Scott?
Joan's a little taller than me, so I'm gonna move the microphone. There we go. Good afternoon, Chairman O'Bannon, Vice Chair Dance, members of the State Board of Elections. I'm here to present the annual report for the State Board of Elections for 2023. Pursuant to 24.2-103, the board is required to submit an annual report to the Governor and the General Assembly on the activities of the board and the department in the previous year. During the 2023 calendar year, the board met a total of 14 times, certifying sitz elections, approving one new regulation, adopting four amendments to existing regulations, and repealing one regulation, in addition to many, a variety of administrative matters. As you can see in your board working papers, the annual report is before you. If approved today, it will be submitted to the Governor, as well as the General Assembly, and posted to elect's public website. Staff recommends that the State Board of Elections approve the annual report as presented.
All right, any questions? But this was very interesting and thorough, and I do have one.
Thank you, I worked very hard on it.
It's not too much trouble, it might be worth sending this specifically to the members of the P and E committees and the money committees, general government, subcommittee members, just so they know what they put you all through.
We can certainly look into that, sir.
Okay. I think it would be useful for them to have benefit of this when they come back to town every year, so.
Fair enough.
We haven't voted on this yet, haven't we? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that the State Board of Elections approve the annual State Board of Elections report for 2023 as presented.
Call the roll.
Chairman O'Bannon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance?
Aye.
Delegate Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Weinstein?
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item of business is related to the city of Winchester. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you a request from Winchester to continue use under 24.2-630 piece of equipment during the November election.
All right. So this is, the background here is that they did do this on a trial basis, but didn't think they got it on.
Yes, the board approved its use in January meeting for use in March.
Re-upping that to make sure, make them comfortable they can use these machines in November.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did have one. I know this request, it says, came from the registrar. Did it also come from the local board? I used to be a local board member of Augusta County, so I just want to know that the local board members were also aware of this.
I can check. We received the.
The registrar's online.
Ms. Martin? Can you unmute yourself?
Trying to, okay, can you hear me? Am I on? Yes, that, yes, that, that item was an agenda item in one of our.
Time out.
Oh, sorry. I'm Liz Martin, go ahead.
Ms. Martin, we, I think under the current rules, we need to be able to see you to accept your input and testimony. If you're able to put yourself on video, I think that would be all we need, otherwise. We may listen to you, but we may not be in compliance with what the new rules are.
Right, okay, so I have a camera plugged into my USB port that I usually use for this, but what else do I need to click?
Can you click on start video? That should be at the bottom of your screen.
Sure, okay, it says stop video right now, so I must have done something.
If you see the little arrow right beside start video, and it should be able to let you click on your camera's name.
Perhaps that's it, okay. Thank you for coaching me through that. You tell me if you get, and now I have camera and camera one, that's.
So it should. Try camera one.
There we go. Sorry about that. Give it a minute.
Which camera has the check beside it?
I only have camera one, no camera or camera one. Camera one has a blue check.
And the other option is no camera?
Correct, because this is a plug-and-play into my USB port of my workstation here. What else do I need to do? I'm looking, okay, there is a settings thing rolling here, let's see. Camera, camera one, camera one. Okay.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
The chairman said that it was okay for you to go ahead and answer.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, sorry about the delay. Yes, this was an agenda item on a recent board meeting, when I suggested we continue with an experimental use with this election, which will be much larger turnout than the one we had in March. So it was something that was an agenda item and consented to by the electoral board.
And it would be in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I needed to know.
All right. Any other public comment or questions? Is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the experimental use of the Unison Open Elect Freedom Vote Scan with software version 2.2 and firmware version 2018 in the city of Winchester for early voting, absentee voting, and the CAP precinct for processing mailed ballots on election day for the period of September 20, 24, to November 6, 2024, for the November 5, 2024 presidential election.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Chairman O'Bannon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance? Delegate Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Weinstein?
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I think that completes our.
Excuse me, Chairman O'Bannon, Claire Bell Wheeler is actually online now, I wanted to know if she could speak.
In deference to Dr. Wheeler, we'll hear her public comment since she signed up.
Dr. O'Bannon, you're very kind, thank you very much. I had a great deal of trouble getting into the WebEx, and clearly, generally, I'm with similar problems, so I apologize. I was going to comment on the batch comparison audit that I believe y'all are going to vote on later on in the day, and if I've missed what other people said, again, I apologize. I wholeheartedly support this method for doing a ranked choice, but, excuse me, a risk-limiting audit. I see several other people on the call today who have actually performed those risk-limiting audits with about, the ballot comparison method, and found it very useful, very financially friendly, meaning it didn't cost very much at all, and they got good results. So I encourage you to support that type of post-election audit. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate your indulgence. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Just so everybody knows, that vote will actually be taken at our September 3 meeting, so you haven't missed the vote.
Thank, thank you, I didn't see it on the agenda, but just let it go by. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Any other items that the board wishes to discuss before we move to closed session? All right. We will proceed, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, I move that the board go into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending threatened litigation in accordance with Section 2.2-3712F. Susan Beale's Commission of Elections and Andrew Murphy of the Office of the Attorney General will attend the closed session because their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the subject of the meeting.
Is there a second? All right, please call the roll.
Chairman O'Bannon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance?
Delegate Merricks? Aye.
Mr. Weinstein?
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much for your attendance today, we appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reconvene the meeting in open session and take a roll call vote certifying that to best of each member's knowledge, only such public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard or discussed by the State Board of Elections.
All right, is there a second? Thank you, please call the roll.
Chairman O'Bannon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dance?
Delegate Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Weinstein?
Aye.
Secretary Elvis Long?
Aye.
All right. Absent objection, we are adjourned, our next meeting is September 3, I guess it'll be here. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Safe travels, enjoy the weather.